Okay, I'd like to call to, oh yeah, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular school committee meeting tonight is November 13th, 2024. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to convene in executive session, which will be a non-public session to discuss the approval of the executive session minutes from our last meeting and collective bargaining pertaining to school nurses, secretaries, and the TTA bargaining units. So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, a second by Mr. Russo. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well for unanimous vote. And we'll reconvene in public session
We now adjourn our meeting in public session now at 6:30 PM.
Resume.
Resume, resume our meeting, I'm sorry. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you'll all join me in a moment of silence for a former employee of the district, David Bolster, he passed away on September 18th this year. He was one of our custodians at the Center Elementary School. He was a devoted custodian, a lifelong Woburn resident. He brought warmth and dedication to his community. One of his coworkers had said he was known for his love of audiobooks and laughter, which filled gatherings, and he talked lots about sports. He'll be fondly missed and remembered by all who knew him. His Jay Harding, the principal of the Center Elementary School, shares memories in saying that David worked very hard to keeping our schools clean and safe, and he will be missed. So if you could all join me in a moment of silence for David. Thank you very much. Moving on now, we have our announcement. Tonight's regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded, may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and on Verizon Channel 34, on youtube.com/tuksburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting at this time. I would like to ask if anybody's recording. Okay, and seeing nobody. Before I move on to some of the business of our meeting, I would just like to thank the community and residents of Tuxbury for supporting the committee's participation with our superintendent, assistant superintendent in the Massachusetts Association, the School Committee, and Massachusetts Association of Superintendents. Joint conference last week, it was an exceptional conference. It was professional development that we were able to attend that better informed us in many ways, whether it was budget, whether it was our role here on the committee. It talked a lot to us about how we can positively impact the district in some great ways, and how we function as members and as a board. So every year I come back, I'm always reminded of what a fantastic community we have, how amazing Tuxbury is, and how lucky we are to have the excellent leadership that we have in our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, our principals, our district leadership, our support staff, and our teachers. So I'd like to just make that recognition. I'm sure that you'll all have your comments tonight at different times, but I wanted to just make that recognition to the community for, on behalf of the whole committee. We have no recognitions tonight, and I'd like to now move on to Rania Alouahi. Thank you very much. Your update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I just have a few updates about what's happened this past month at TMHS. To begin, some sports updates include that the fall sports season is coming to an end. The Methuen Tuxbury Swim and Dive Team finished their season with seven wins and two losses. We had many state qualifiers and countless personal bests set at the sectional meet, which was held at MIT, and the state meet, which was held Sunday at Boston University. The girls' cheer team was named the D3 MVC Champions and will be advancing to regional shortly. The field hockey team were named MVC II Champions for the first time since 2013, but they unfortunately fell to fall four to zero this past Friday. The girls' soccer team is entering postseason with an 11-5-2 record, and they will be facing the winner of Norwell versus Swamp Scott. The football team was beaten by Methuen on Friday, November 1st, unfortunately surrendering the title of MVC Division II Champions to the Rangers. The Tuxbury volleyball team fell in the playoffs to Wakefield by a margin of 25 to 18. The boys' cross-country team and golf squad both placed ninth at MVCs. Some club updates have. Today, NHS hosted a school-wide volleyball tournament open to both students and teachers. We had four student teams, and admission was one canned good per person. On October 31st, the NHS E-Board hosted a very successful trunk-or-retreat that was enjoyed by young trunk-or-retreaters along with some of the students. We had 28 groups that decorated their cars, and we had three winners of best car, scariest car, and best theme. The Student Council teamed up with Class Council to plan a pep rally which will be held the half-day before Thanksgiving break, and it'll entail several games and activities along with an engaging spirit week leading up to it. The Student Council has also been in the process of organizing community leafraking opportunities around town. The Interact Club hosted their first blood drive of the year last Friday, November 8th, and several members volunteered to give out snacks and aid to those giving blood. TMHS DECA will be holding the Megan McCarthy Fashion Show in just one week on November 19th in the auditorium. Also, several DECA members, they planned Step Up Day on Thursday, November 7th, in which eighth graders were able to expose themselves to TMHS and the opportunities offered within this school. Best Buddies had their basketball senior night on October 30th at the TMHS Gym, and they also had a successful Halloween party on October 29th in LGAIwan. The International Club is offering Engine, which is a global volunteer opportunity to mentor students from around the world, and they're looking for volunteers to volunteer once again at the Jingle Bell Race in Havrell. And finally, the TMHS Theater Company will present its fall musical from Thursday, November 21st to Saturday, November 23rd. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rania. Any questions or comments?
Is he busy?
Yeah. Thank you.
I have just one. With regard to the fashion show, can you relay to the club that it would be helpful to have the flyer go to the win so that the eighth-grade students that are participating know to purchase tickets for their families?
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely let them know.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, and moving on now, I would like to hand over to Mrs. Terry over again. I know you'd like to probably introduce Mr. Milligan.
Yeah, our assistant superintendent, Nancy Milligan, will give you an overview and update as to MCAS progress, not only in the state but here in Tuxbury. So Nancy, you gonna take the podium?
Yes, please, thank you.
Mr. Marshall, do we need to tone down that light right there? Is it, are you able to capture it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So as the superintendent said, tonight I'd like to present a high-level overview of some of the next steps that you'll see as for our achievement and our accountability score data from the state. First off, I'd like to start with that accountability still matters. With the vote on November 5th around question two, there are some questions, I'll be giving a little bit more in my update later, but MCAS is still required as part of our state and federal mandates, and that we'll continue to test in grades three through eight and grades 10 for ELA in math, along with science in grades five, eight, and 10. In grade eight for Massachusetts, we will also continue with the civics exam that begins in 2025, it was previously in a pilot stage. This first slide talks about the overall state results, and the reason that I put it here across the board is that you can see that across the state, that the entire state has dipped in all, in the ELA and mathematics with some success in science. To contextualize our Tuxbury results, we need to start with the overall state averages. It's important to note that overall, all grade levels saw declines in the percentage of students in the meeting and/or exceeding proficiency categories for this year, except for science. This is the first data point to consider as we've been to understand our Tuxbury data. On this slide, you'll see Tuxbury versus the state to give you the general overview. As you can see, we're about at state averages, but we are, we did increase the number of students in the approaching categories for proficiency levels that we would like to delve into in this district. When we think about MCAS accountability, we think about normative percentiles as normative. This is where we are compared to schools serving comparable grade spans. So 2024 gives us that account, the accountability levels that were started in 2019. The accountability percentile is that comparative measure with other schools in the state that have the same grade spans. We are always provided a percentile progress towards targets at the individual school performance criterion level. The overall, one of the pieces that we should note, though, is that for overall, our district classification, we are not requiring assistance or... classification, we are not requiring assistance or intervention currently based on the two-year weighted average. In all of our schools, we are also not requiring assistance or intervention currently based on the two-year weighted average. So that's good news for Tuxbury. So let's start to look at the accountability percentile. So this is just a general overview. The data is normative. This is where we are compared to schools serving comparable grade spans, and you can see where they are divided into the three categories. We have schools serving only grades K through eight. We have schools serving a combination of K through eight or nine through 12, and then we have schools that are only serving nine through 12. So when we compare our schools, those are the types of schools that we're compared to within those spans. This chart shows a look at our accountability percentiles over the past few years. We do not have accountability for 2020 or '21 because we did not take the MCAS test or because we took the abbreviated version. Remember, an accountability percentile is between 1 and 99 is reported for most schools. The number is an indication of the school's overall performance relative to the other school, the other schools that serve similar grade spans, and it's calculated using multiple years of data for accountability indicators. We should note that 82% of schools in the Commonwealth, accountability designation was not requiring assistance or intervention. That's where Tuxbury fell. That's slightly down from last year at 83%. 60.3% of schools met or exceeded to make some progress towards accountability targets, again slightly down from 62% last year. And 50 schools in the Commonwealth are identified as schools of recognition for their strong growth or overall achievement, down from 66 schools last year. So I just wanted to contextualize what was happening across the state. On this slide, when we think about the progress towards these targets, we measure districts and schools' performance towards improvement targets. It's reported as a percentage, and the indicators that are included in these targets include our achievement levels for ELA, math, and science, our growth scores for ELA and math, our English language proficiency levels, that's only at the district level, chronic absenteeism, advanced coursework completion, high school-only indicators of the four-year graduation rate, the extended engagement rate, and annual dropout rates. When we think about the point scale for accountability, this is how we get those points that I'm going to show you in a moment. If we've declined, we'd be getting zero points. If there's no change in our data, we are receive one point. If we improve but we're below our target, we receive two points. If we've met our target, we receive three points, and if we exceed our target, we receive four points. Overall progress towards improvement targets, our annual criterion reference percentage is calculated over a two-year period. And as you can see on this slide, that last year's percentage is only weighted at 40% and this year's weighted at 60%. So that combined weighted average gives us our cumulative criterion reference target change of 44%, moderate progress towards our targets. Here is the chart when I was explaining where those points come into. So this gives you that overall, where did our weighted criterion weighted average come from? So you can see across those criterion areas that I discussed, our achievement levels, our growth areas, areas, our high school completion, our progress towards attaining EL language proficiency and other indicators. This is the totality of how the state weighs our progress towards our targets and how our overall criterion referenced target is calculated. And although we have room to grow, there are areas to highlight, including the improvement of our lowest-performing students in ELA and math achievement for all schools, and meeting targets in ELA growth for all students three through eight in math growth at the high school. It should also be noted and celebrated that chronic absenteeism in all grade levels and advanced coursework at the high school exceeded expectations. So what is this data telling us? We'll be talking about the MCAS results through the lens of achievement as well as our student growth percentiles. When we think about achievement, the results tell us how each student is achieving in relation to state standards. So is the student demonstrating proficiency at the grade six level for mathematics? Whereas student growth measures change in an individual's student performance over time. This is how much did the student improve in mathematics from grades five to six, or did the student improve more or less than their academic peers? From my perspective, I look more at the growth percentile than necessarily achievement because we've set out to say that we want to make sure all students are growing, and this is one of the indicators that we can look at to really say, did we meet our targets? So to me, student growth percentile is, I weigh more than the achievement because I think that at the end of the day, every child needs to be able to say that they were growing in the right direction. Student growth percentiles are reported in percentiles between 0 and 99, and it's a reflection of improvement and/or loss for those students. Typical growth is considered to be within the range of 40 to 60, with 50 being the average. So when we look at our element, the elementary scores are only, pardon me, and elementary scores are only reflective of grade four because you need two years of data, so you want to be able to show that they've grown from baseline. So when we look at this chart, you will see that most of the areas between ELA and math with, we're within that growth area, 40 to 60 for our student growth percentiles. We do have one area looking at grade four math, which is below our intended, the intended growth that we'd want in that percentile, and that's an area that we'd be looking at. And that's the culmination of everything from kindergarten up to grade four that we really need to be looking at. When we take a deeper dive into our district and our school-based levels, we want to be looking at our performance levels. And as you can see, here is an overview of our district data, looking at that 43% of our students were meeting or exceeding the threshold for proficiency levels. Our average scale score, the scaled score is at 500, and our scale scored is 497, which is one percentage point down from last year, but our SGP, our growth actually has increased from last year. So even though our performance has declined with only 43% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations, a drop from 6% of last year, it's still 1% over the state average. Addressing this decline will be our key focus. For student growth, the average student growth percentile, when we're looking at 50, is right at that state average. This shows typical growth, but we want to aim to accelerate progress, particularly with students who are below proficiency. Our areas in need, the trend over the recent years shows a gradual increase in students not meeting expectations, highlighting the need for targeted support in foundational skills as triangulated with our internal DIBELS data. The next steps is that we would like to continue to support the implementation of data-driven interventions to address those trends. School performance across our district. Tuxbury Memorial High School has the highest percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations at 69%, while our lowest building is only at 30%. This indicates a significant disparity in the performance across our schools, signaling where targeted support may be needed for our students. The overall decline over time across all schools, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA has steadily declined from 63% in 2019 to 48% in 2024, but it is mirroring the decline in the state averages. Therefore, our next steps is that we really need to emphasize plans to support our lower-performing schools and grade levels through targeted interventions within our classrooms, the professional development around increasing tier-one instruction, and addressing disparities in support for literacy growth. The district overview for mathematics. Here you'll see that 42% of our students are meeting or exceeding the expectations in math across the district. We are down 4% from the previous year. Our average scaled score was just under the 500 mark, at the high end of the partially meeting expectations. The average SGP shows that we are in the higher end of the typical growth range, but not at the full year's growth. This was slightly higher than last year and also slightly lower than the state average of SGP. Our next step, similar to ELA, will be to consider the mathematical domains and clusters that are impacting student performance and how those manifest within our classrooms. The overall school performance for mathematics, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectation in math across the schools has been relatively stable but low, with 42% in 2024, down from 59% in 2019, again mirroring the state decline. Tuxbury Memorial High School has the highest performance at 58%, meeting or exceeding expectations, and other schools show slower, pardon me, lower percentages, demonstrating students approaching but under the meeting expectation threshold. Next steps will be to consider the mathematical clusters and domains in each grade level, looking at breaking that down to see where the foundational knowledge is needed. And finally, for the district overview, performance for science, students take the science test in only grades five, eight, and 10. Our average scaled score in science is lower than the previous years, with about 45% of our students meeting and exceeding, and this is about 1% higher than the state average. The school-level performance for science, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations has declined from 54% 2019 to 45% in 2024, and performance is relatively even across the grade levels with slight variations. Grade five is performing around 46%, meeting or exceeding grade eight, 42%, and grade 10, 49%. This data suggests that while Tuxbury Memorial High School has relatively higher performance, there's a consistent need for improvement in science achievement across all grades in schools. The next steps include reviewing the science strands and looks across the grade levels for opportunities for all grade levels to support students and their ability to engage with and apply their scientific concepts. The next slide talks about chronic absenteeism, and this is our non-high school, so this is for grades three through eight. One area to celebrate in the district are the efforts put forth to address chronic absenteeism in the district. On a district level, attendance concerns have been embedded into the revised district-wide student support team process. Schools continue to engage with families to identify barriers and implement supports for students who are experiencing chronic absenteeism. The steps to reduce chronic absenteeism include family outreach, contacting parents to identify those barriers, holding parent and student meetings with the counselor to identify those potential barriers, and reinstituting the attendance policies, which indicate when a student would need to be, to be able to have remediate attendance due to exceeding the identified number of days' absence. And remember, chronic absenteeism is having more than 10% of your days outside of school, so in a 180-day school year, it'd have more than 18 absences. At the high school level, additionally, Mr. Long and the High School School Leadership Team also reinstituted the attendance policy identifying the number of absences which required remediation to reinstate credit, including the senior project participation if needed. It should be noted that students with documented disabilities or medical concerns will receive attendance waiver with the proper documentation. Some of the district takeaways. Overall, the results here in Tuxbury were consistent with what we saw across the state, but we need to continue to focus our attention on early literacy and numeracy in closing the gaps for our subgroups, especially students with disabilities. We're continuing to, the implementation of our math curriculum units, and successful adoption of the implementation of Hagerty and Foundations, while we also go through our second year of our EL education curriculum. We're continuing to use the Literacy Coach to support tier-one instruction, provide targeted support to our teachers, and look at our reading specialists to target our lowest students within small groups. Building principals have been asked to review the data and disaggregate the standards that we need to focus on in each subject, at each grade level to support principals, and share with PLCs to help plan for these targeted, standards-based instructional practices. The actions needed. First, we need to refine the implementation of our SST process within a multi-tiered system of support, starting with strong tier-one instruction when we provide our interventions. We need to continue to focus on early literacy through our Hagerty and Foundations, which is the basis of phonics and phonemic awareness. We need to continue with case six implementation of our EL-vetted, high-quality curriculum resource. We need to continue with the implementation of our, the math curriculum units, and we also need to be looking at maximizing our instructional coaching model in math, training our teachers to use the concrete, pictorial, and abstract to support students within the classroom. Next steps that we need to further examine math domains and clusters for student success as we identified that as one area within our SGP specifically, pardon me, in grade four. We need to implement and analyze our new math screener, Ames Web, in our IXL math data that we have at the WIN Middle School. We need to look at common formative assessments and Otis to track student progress towards these standards and reporting, and we need to utilize data more effectively to increase opportunities for inclusive practices within our classrooms. In your presentation, you have appendix that has all the links to all of the resources that are available to understand accountability and achievement, along with MCAS in the state. And I think that brings us to questions. It does. That's it.
You're welcome to join us back at the table if you'd like. Makes it easier for conversation. And then, any questions or comments? Anybody like to go first?
I can go first. Thanks. I, I know we talked a lot last year about the chronic absenteeism and all the work that the district was doing to get kids back in school, and it's really nice to see the positive trend and just seeing that these kiddos are getting back into the school. So that was really promising to see. I guess the, my question is, I see that we are declining in a number of areas. Is there, the data that's provided back, is there specific focus in that data to see where exactly within ELA we need to focus on?
So they provide us with item analysis so that we can look at each individual question and look at what strands each question was based off of, and you can look and you can find patterns in the data. Remember, it's one snapshot in time. So even though it's one data point, we want to triangulate that against our internal data points as well, whether it's DIBELS or IXL or even the common assessments our teachers have been utilizing, to make sure that through all of those pieces, we are putting the energy in the right area because one or two questions on one test shouldn't be driving all of our educational decisions. So it takes some time to look through the item analysis and then triangulate the data.
And do you, with the, the, is it any concern around the EL program that we're using that might, it's just because that was new, is there a?
So when you bring in a new curriculum resource, you usually do see an implementation dip.
Yeah.
And that's common with anything. The other piece that when we are talking with the directors and really looking at some of this data, especially at the lower grades, when we're looking at grades four, five, and six, not only are those students, the students that we're, think about in kindergarten, your fifth graders during COVID, they also switched buildings at that same time. So you have the combination of COVID, a school restructuring, and a new curriculum all coming in at the same time. So any one of those areas could have impacted students, but I think the combination of all three together is something that we're seeing and dealing with. But I think that knowing where the students struggle, especially with some of the phonics and phonemic awareness that they would have missed in kindergarten, is still something that we're seeing as they move up to the Ryan School that you don't typically see.
Okay, okay. Thank you. How's that? Thank you.
Great. Smoke out?
Sure. So thank you for the presentation and information. If I were a layperson, which I sort of am, and I see the lines going down.
Yes.
I mean, how worried should somebody be? Is there a critical level that we don't want to, we don't want to come near?
Sure. I think that there's two pieces that we need to think about. You saw, I started with the slide, the slide showing that the entire state has gone down since 2014. So I do think that's one thing that we have to consider. The entire state has gone down, and I think that there's some analysis that has to be done there. Is it the test? Is it COVID? Is it a variety of different aspects? Is it the emotional well-being of students coming out of COVID, back into an academic environment? So I think that although we're mimicking the state, that's one thing that we can look at, but I do think as our district, I do think that we have to do better than the state. Obviously, there are districts that are continuing to grow, and there are districts that are continuing to do less well than us, but that's why it's that average, and we're around the average. So I do think that when we're looking at the ELA and the math data in science in grades five, eight, and 10, I do think that there is something that we need to be looking at our curriculum, our instruction, and our assessment, and that's why those three things go together. So with a new curriculum for EL, that's one thing that we have to consider that with an implementation dip, but then we also have to look at the instructional practices and the assessments we're using, and that's why we've also brought in Ames Web for math, for math as another screener, because you want to triangulate data. So you want to make sure that if you're going So you want to make sure that if you're going from Boston to LA, you don't have just two data points. You want at least a third data point, because did you go up through Minneapolis or did you go down through Texas? So the more data points that we can take into consideration, the better the story we're going to have to tell. And I think that when we get our MCAS data, it's now triangulating a lot of the data points to understand what truly is our implementation story and what is truly happening here in Tuxbury. So I do think that, should we be concerned? I think that any state that's going down should be concerned and look at the reasons why, but I think you have to keep going, but why, 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 why? And that takes some time. So even though the results came out in September, it does take a lot more time to try to triangulate all the data points that we have within the district. We do know that our DIBELS scores were low. We do see that our MCAS scores are low, so there's two data points that we need to look back on and understand. So what do we have to do better? That's why HEGREDE is focused on in the presentation and in the district. That's why FUNDATION is focused on in the presentation in the district, because those are your core foundational pieces that allow students to be able to move into high-level thinking for reading. So if you can't hear sounds and words, if you can't encode, if you can't decode, you're not going to then be able to understand the text that you're reading. So the foundational pieces have to be put into place, and we have to follow that data. On the math side of it, it's the numeracy skills, and up until this year, we hadn't had another data point that we go past for that third data point. So we had MCAS in grades three through 10, and then you also had internal Otis assessments, common assessments, unit assessments within the district. But having a third data point is going to help us understand how to get to where we need to go. So the more data that we can bring in and triangulate, the better we're going to be to truly call down what students need. I know the superintendent and I have been walking through the district, and we're doing another set of walkthroughs tomorrow, trying to look at what are we seeing in instructional practices. So curriculum is one piece, assessment's one piece, and then the instructional practice is in place. So trying to put all those pieces together systematically across all six buildings is something that is always a work in progress in every district. So MCAS is one data point that we should be using as an accountability measure, but it's only one data point, and it's only one snapshot in time. So we definitely have to look at some of the additional data that we bring in. So to your point, is this alarming? I don't think it's alarming in the sense that we should revamp everything, but I do think that there's places that we can grow, so.
It's a matter of many small changes rather than one large full sweep, full swoop, excuse me.
Right. The scientific process, try something and follow the data, did it work? Small increments, and that's what we're asking our teachers to do in their classrooms.
And in their PLCs, which is a big, that's the focus, is what does the data show us? What do we think is that challenge we need to address? How will we know if we're making that progress? So as Ms. Milligan shared, you know, the MCAS is a state assessment, right, aligned to our standards. We now have a nationally-normed assessment in both ELA and math, and we have our regular data points day-to-day. That's that formative piece that should really form the way instruction looks in the class. That's what we're trying to ask our PLCs to put together now that they have all this data in front of them, so that the instruction can adapt. MCAS is a tough piece of data to look at, because really, it's a reflection of our work, not necessarily the student, and we have to really focus on then how do we improve? Big content areas, Ms. Anderson, as you said, we can glean some of that, and then obviously address targeted students, but really, it's those regular instructional areas that we have to say, what can we do better?
Thank you.
Ms. Russo?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. Actually, I'm glad that you've touched on a couple of things already, just in conversation with my colleagues here. So a couple of things, I guess, from my perspective. So I agree with Ms. Anderson, excellent swings with the chronic absenteeism. I know that was a big focal point last year, and it's good to see that the changes that we've implemented have had some impact there, which is fantastic. You touched upon correlation to the new curriculum with the LA, so I think, again, I appreciate the fact that there's an initial dip potentially. You know, what are signs that we should look to say, when typically you would start to come out of that dip? Maybe three years?
So it's interesting, depending on who you speak with, but honestly, three to five years is when something new starts to take hold, and five to seven is when it sustains, and that's really educational, what the literature says. So we're moving into our second full year, because when you think about it, you get a new curriculum, you didn't write it.
Yeah.
So you don't really know what you don't know until you live it.
Yeah.
And try to understand what was the writer's intent. The second year, you've now lived it, and now you're starting to understand, oh, I see why they've moved things around then. Historically, I might have taught in a different order. And then the third year, now you can actually implement with integrity, not necessarily fidelity, because you know what the targets are. What's important is always to hold tight to those assessments, so that we compare students across grade levels and across classrooms to make sure that we are all moving. When we start to deviate from the standards in the assessment piece, that's when we're starting to compare apples and oranges. So craft is when you start to come into your third year, you can see why, and you maybe change out an activity for an activity, because you know where you're going. So it's always keeping that end in mind.
Understood. Just a point of clarification from my perspective, the student growth percentiles that you shared within the 40 to 60 range. So math seemed consistent, with the exception of the grade four, but then with ELA, you're going up, 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 and then at the high school, it drops. Anything that we can sort of derive from that? Is it, again, is it something that we're not doing maybe better or that we could be doing better? I don't know, I'm just trying to make some.
So again, you're looking at, the nice thing about student growth percentiles is it takes the student, and based on their historical data and their peer group, students like them that have been scoring the same way, it projects out, it gives you a target of where you should hit. So what that says when you are in that 40 to 60 range is that you're making the typical growth. We are always shooting for above 60, especially when you see scores declining. We need to do more, and that would show us, that's an indication that we are doing better than that. When it's less than that, then we're actually not doing even, not doing the service we should. So when you see something like that, it could be the test. You know, one of the pieces I didn't put in the packet, but I can give you, is I was following cohorts to try to see where they were growing. So as the third graders became fourth graders, became fifth graders, so I was looking at that data as well, and I didn't put it in this presentation, because I'm still looking at the data being new to the district and not having the history. But I think that that would be something that if you'd like me to look at, to look at that cohort group.
Yeah.
It might be the cohort group, it might be the test, it might be instruction. There's a lot of different places that we have to dig in, which takes a lot of time to go through and dig in each individual area to try to create that story.
Right. Okay. No, that's helpful. And then I think, there was a lot of talk, there's been a lot of talk about learning loss from COVID. It's a real thing, you know, I buy into it. So if I just kind of strip out the 19, 20 years, even 18 to 20 years, and I look at from just 21 to 24, right?
Yeah.
And you start to look at some of the meeting and exceeding in each of the different subject areas. Again, math seems fairly consistent, you know, you'd like it to be higher, but it's consistent. With ELA, goes from 60% to 44% over the post-COVID years, and then even science goes from 50% to 45%. I just, when I think of learning loss, I think of coming out of the pandemic. I'm thinking like, after post-COVID, there's been sort of things that have been put in place to try and mitigate that or come out of that. So I'm trying to, just in my head, rationalize how we're still declining from a new baseline, I guess, maybe.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know how to rationalize it.
I think, all right.
It's one data point, I get it.
Yeah. And in grades K through three, if you will, right, students are learning, learning to learn, learning, not, and that's tough, when those two years had significant learning gap, loss, nothing, right?
No doubt.
Or lack of.
Yeah.
So now, when you consider that fourth grader who maybe was in K or one during those very two difficult years of learning loss, there's a lot of early learning that we rely on.
Yeah.
That now you don't have for that third grader, fourth grader. If we think about K1, 2, 3, those are early formative years around foundational reading, numeracy, and that is, we are seeing that play out, and not in necessarily growth, but achievement across the state. It is a real thing. I'm glad that you did bring that up. The acceleration, I don't think we all saw happen in the way that we wanted to. Kids did not bounce back as easily. I would even venture to say our adults, you know, that was a real difficult instructional challenge for all, and we are seeing growth, we're seeing results, but even getting back into the habit of routinely looking at data to make instructional changes is something we really need to focus on, not just in Tuxbury, but across the board, and I think that is the key. We have really good curriculum resources at hand, but that regular data look and regular, it's a muscle we have to build back up.
Right.
So why in the school, we are also concerned our high school growth is low.
Yeah.
And that's something that we need to dig deep in with those PLCs, you know, where can that change? We don't have intervention blocks here. Maybe that's something that we need to look at, similarly to our middle school. A lot of questions, and obviously, a lot of work ahead of us, so I know that's not an answer so much, but when you do think about those formative years of learning.
Yeah.
It, they don't just fill in.
Right.
You know, because we're all back at school full-time, so it is a thing.
And to piggyback off of that, you know, it's obvious to say, you know, a kindergartner and what they lost for that early piece, but another example would be if you were a third grader in 2019, fractions are only taught in third, fourth, and fifth grade. So if you were a third grader in 2019, you were out of school that last part of 2020, and then we had that hybrid.
Right.
After that, you moved on to sixth grade, and fractions are no longer part of the standards anymore. And think about the knowledge that you need to understand how numbers work when you get into percentages or decimals, if you don't understand the basics of fractions. So it's not just one grade level that we can say, we can say, you know, our kindergartners got hit the hardest. It's really every grade level that had something that was foundational to the later learning that now, how are you going to gap fill that? So it is interesting when you start to see, to your point, this many years of how it's actually playing out, because I thought by now, and I think that we all thought by now and hope by now, with everything, especially with the SR money that we all had, to help accelerate the learning loss, that we'd start to see that uptick, and some districts are. But we are not a district that is reaping those rewards yet.
Where do we, this is, I know this is a state requirement, there's a federal piece to this as well. You know, Massachusetts is down as a whole as well, so again, to Mr. Moncada's point, you know, no real alarms per se, maybe at the state level. I guess from a federal level, I mean, from our standpoint, you know, being elected officials, you know, it's something that we can maybe try to advocate for with our state delegation to say, how do we think about this in comparison, as a state of Massachusetts, in comparison to the rest of the country, right? When you start to think about, well, are there other states that are maybe starting to come out of that? Because I think everybody suffered that learning loss, some in one way, shape, or another, but now you might look at some states that are trending in the right direction versus still maybe on the downwards side of it, and maybe it's just something that we can all try to think about from our, with our state delegation to say, okay, how can we go and advocate for things that maybe, not just in Tuxbury, but across our state lead?
And I do think you'll see some of that legislation come up and the impacts when you saw DESI really promoting high-quality instructional materials and putting a lot of money towards districts to acquire high-quality instructional materials like we did here by bringing in EL.
Yeah.
So you'll start to see, when you look at other states, I'll give you a perfect example, Louisiana was one of those states that brought in a statewide, high-quality instructional material for ELA and saw that growth. You saw it all rise. So here in Massachusetts, they saw that, and I do think, you know, a lot of the push was, how do we support our districts? And it was, you saw money coming out of DESI to get those materials in people's hands. So I do think that those pushes plus time, to your point of when will we see that implementation dip come up? I do think that third year is when you really do start to see, you'll see pockets when you start to look to disaggregate the item analysis. When you look at vocabulary, that one area, which is only one standard in the main ten, you'll see growth there. But when, how does that vocabulary development then transition into the reading standards and into the writing standards and then the speaking, listening standards? It's going to take time to build it out, but you do see pockets and places, but it's not shown on these high-level tests.
Early writing, I would say, too.
Correct.
I mean, we're astonished at the writing we're seeing out of our kindergartners and first graders and second graders, and that will take time to catch up to our MCAS, obviously, but there's no doubt in our formative assessing and regular curriculum work in the classroom, the writing is head and shoulders above where it was years back.
And then just last point, and then I'll turn it back over to the Madam Chair. A lot of the focal points of some of the action items, you kind of tie to the PLC facilitation that's happening in the school.
Coaching.
And co-teaching. So I'm just trying to think of, you know, at some point, maybe after the new year, maybe early springtime, you know, to kind of come back to the committee with some of the learnings, maybe, that have come out of that. I do think it would be good, and again, it's just, it's a cyclical thing, right? Because, you know, we're going to have another snapshot in time again this time next year, right? And so it'll just be good to kind of have that as a benchmark to say, to see, like, okay, what did our educators come out with as sort of action items with the buy-in of the district leadership, and then how did we sort of, you know, correlate that to next year's scores, I guess, maybe? So I'll stop there.
I think that's a great point.
Thanks for the conversation.
Ms. B. John Smith?
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of what I have questions on have already been covered here and there. I think maybe a topic for discussion is like how to do conversations, so that we can like not overlap on questions and stuff, so there's some things that some people said that I had some feedback on. One being, Ms. Russo mentioning the new baseline, and then you saying how our kindergarten and first grader really, you know, coming head and heels above, you know, head and shoulders above with their writing. That new baseline, I think, in my opinion, what I'm thinking is really these kids that are, that weren't impacted by COVID. So not your 21-year, really, whatever, and I didn't do the math on what grade that is incoming, but really, your students that weren't impacted by that learning loss, because that pocket of learning loss is just following them, like you've discussed throughout their education.
Key foundational skills, yeah.
Right, so new baseline, not necessarily 2021.
Yeah.
But really, whatever year that is out, '27, whatever it is. And then similar to what Rich was just mentioning on point in time, test is a point in time, but the teacher who had a certain grade, class, that class gets their grades, their results.
Results.
Yeah, their results a year later, almost. How does that, can you talk a little bit about how that, both the student and the staff are impacted by those results? I think that was a big topic of conversation around the politicizing of the MCAS and all of that, and really helping people understand, yeah, I got that grade a year ago, why do I care about what my kid had a year ago?
I'll start with this, there's two things at play, and that's sort of where I was going before. So there's the individual students. So if my students in fifth grade took the MCAS, those data points, sure, the fifth-grade teachers see them, but it's really important that the sixth-grade teachers know who those, they have what's called the, you know, lowest quartile students that achieved and students that are close and students that did very well. So they know how their students did the year before. But what's important at the grade level now is fifth grade looks at the overall, the standards, the content, where were the areas as fifth grade instructional educators we need to focus on, because maybe we weren't hitting the instructional mark. And I'm not saying that people aren't doing a really hard job and doing their very best, but that overview tells us, for example, fractions was one of those content areas, you know, is that a skill overall we need to pump up? Oh, reorder. So there's the content that grade levels are looking at or content areas look at in general in their curriculum, in their scope and sequence, in their resources needed, in the instructional lessons, do we retool these lessons to meet the needs of our learners? And then there's the interventions that are going to be needed with our students that performed, and they could be a one- performed, and it could be a one-off. It really could be a one-off. And that's where the triangulation of nationally normed data, the state tests, and regular data says, geez, I have no idea why, you know, Johnny or Susie did poorly on this because they're doing very well regularly. That could be a one-off. So there's many ways the teachers look at the data, whole group, content area needs, and then the next grade level interventions needed for some students. Does that make sense?
Sure does.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it? No, okay.
Yep.
I just have a couple of questions. I think you all had a lot of questions, I did too, or at least touched close enough. Thank you so much for your presentation. I think it was helpful, the amount of data you shared with us and the charts was very helpful, digestible.
So is that balance?
A lot of information out there. I will say, it helped to have you present it as well, because looking at it alone, I was like, what does all this mean? So it was very helpful. I think when you talk about the high-quality instructional materials, you know, thinking back to when we were, you were looking at new, you know, EL. Is the state looking at this high-quality instructional materials and are they looking at some of the data with the different districts and saying, you know, Tewksbury and seven other districts are using EL? And then, I'm not going to use the name of the other ones that we looked at, but they're using these. Are they comparing to say?
So they're not comparing district to district by curriculum program, but it's public information that you can go on, I forget what the new term is, it used to be called heat maps. But you can go on and you can actually see what districts are using for their materials, and you can do a filter. So you can see, here are all the districts in the state that are using EL education, that have adopted EL education. And I know that we're part of the high-quality instructional materials network from DESI, because that was important to us, to network with the other districts to say, how's it going? What adjustments are you making and what are you seeing in your student data? So where do, we are fortunate to have been chosen to be part of that work. And I think it's important that districts do that data. Whenever you can work together across districts, there's just more power to that, because at the end of the day, you might have two curriculum materials, the same curriculum material, but you might be utilizing, again, integrity over fidelity, because every district is a little bit different. And when you look at, here are the standards, here's the assessment, I have to go from this to this for students. But there is craft, there's still autonomy, we want to give teachers in their path. The curriculum resource gives us options, but doing that work across districts, it works smarter, not harder. Districts should all be doing this work together, and we should be networking. So we're fortunate with bringing in the new ELA curriculum, that we have this network that we can be part of. But the state is not necessarily saying, here are the districts, you can filter MCAST scores by those districts. But that's actually a really neat thing to consider when you're talking about how can DESI be more helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I would think if you're, say, Tewksbury's seeing a dip in vocabulary, and then you talk to 10 other districts using the same instructional materials, and they're seeing the same dips in the same grade levels.
Right.
You would like to think that you could circle back to this company and say, you need some supplemental resources, and they need to really look at, you know, what we're using. So, and not to say that you're blaming the resources, but if we're all using the resources and we're all seeing the same results.
Right, exactly. Or you're not seeing the same results as some districts that are knocking it out of park. What are you doing different? Are you holding tight to the fidelity? Are you holding tight to integrity? Or did you abandon parts of it and replace?
And that could come down to schedule, time.
Yeah.
Where, I think you should feel really good. We do have one of the highest-rated curated ELA curriculums in the state, and we have also dedicated a good chunk of time, more than some districts.
More than a lot of districts.
In how much time we're giving towards ELA as well as math. So, you know, we feel good about those things, right? But we have to keep digging to find out how we can do better.
There's that question, my next question kind of flips over to math a little bit, in terms of where the district has kind of a little bit, I guess I'm just going to say, I know that now that you're on the report cards that are standards-based, the curriculum kind of alignment that you're using with math, are you finding that you're able to hit those targets and hitting the actual items that you need to check off as opposed to having a formulated curriculum in math where you don't have that, like you do with EL?
So we are using a mathematical resource called TANG for the district in the lower grades, K six, K...
And I'm going to blank now. Well, K through five and six has a resource that partners well with some of those foundational skills.
So I do think that part of the analysis that we do when we're thinking about the ELA curriculum, now talking to the Director of Mathematic Science, Jason Stamp, he is looking, he is seeing that there has been a decline. The nice part about the math support in the district is that we do have three math coaches. So I do think that, was it, we were just talking today, talking about the guidance from someone out in the field that says, if you do anything when you're doing budget cuts, never get rid of your coaches. So one of the things that we're fortunate is to have those coaches to really be able to go in and when we're seeing this information, really go and work with teachers. I know that the math coaches, I think even today, were at Mrs. Garrish's school this morning, weren't they? And it's nice to have that resource, to really be able to have them help dig in. Whenever you can continue to have people that can help support teachers in the classroom, whether it helps them to disaggregate information, understand instructional practice, look at assessment data, that's an invaluable resource to have in the district. So I know that when the newest information came out with, for MCAST, I know that the director, the STEM director is looking through all of the domains and clusters to look similarly like we are in ELA, are there areas such as fractions for students that we need to bolster because of the way that domains move on in mathematics? The nice part about ELA, there's only 10 standards, and they continue to grow. Think of it as a staircase. Math is very unique, because you move on from skills to applying to another level and really expanding your knowledge. But some of that teaching happens at specific grade levels. So it's a different beast as we analyze.
You heard a lot about science of reading and what we know about the way students learn to, you know, formulate sounds and words and reading and writing and all, and literacy skills and how it all connects. Similarly, in math, we're learning and our coaches are helping to instruct our teachers how to properly, I'm going to call it science of math for lack of a better term. And we, I think you saw in Nancy's presentation, the terminology called from concrete to pictorial to abstract. We can't teach math through abstract algorithms or methodologies like we all learned math. Sometimes we learned with pictorial. But we know that we need to improve our instruction with concrete tools. And that's part of our observing classrooms and getting our coaches in to help when we know that content area is an area struggling. And I'll just go back to fractions. You know, we learned it, we learned it all on pencil and paper, right? Abstract. When students don't understand the concept of fractions and real concrete matter, they will struggle forever. It's really, it's like not learning how to sound out a word. And so we know we can improve on bringing that concrete piece to every classroom. That's a goal and focus of the district. Our coaches are going to help our teachers with that. We need to provide the resources and help them learn how to use them so that kids, because remember, we have language learners in our classroom, too, different than, you know, our history in Tewksbury. We have many language learners, so, and students with, you know, learning disabilities, and we need to keep them in the classroom, provide those instructional supports so that they are learning. So we're learning more about the way kids learn math and implementing that as well. So I think you're going to hear more as we continue to talk through that.
Thank you. No, it's helpful. And I think my last parting words, I, we always come back to parents. I think anytime you have an opportunity to share with families what you do with the data, they're desperate to know. I think that's the biggest question, I think especially with the ballot question that was out. What do you need the data for? Why do we need to do this? You know, what is the district even doing with the data? And, you know, this is, we, every year, we go through this data pretty extensively, and we hear about it throughout the year again. So we, we know what you're doing with it, we hear it from teachers. And I just think families would love to know, even just, just a blurb, just a one-pager, you know, this is what we did with the data. We, we knew that when we purchased this EL system, you know, for, you know, ELA, that the MCAST data weighed into that, or just, you know.
Well, fascinating that you bring that up. We'll be sharing with parents because of the foundations of math. Greg Tang is doing a parent session on how to help kids learn math concretely. So I think that that is key, that we're providing those resources back home for those that want to learn, how do I help my child? And I think in math, it's the hardest area. Parents often say, I don't understand why you're teaching it that way? How can I help? So hopefully, this will be a resource that parents will latch on to. That should be in the newsletter this Friday.
Good, thank you. So, as we know, it's not the data point that you hang your hat on, we triangulate a lot, so we hear you. But just, you know, that's my only...
I just want to point a clarification. In Tewksbury, they, the state calls it a 10th-grade science STE, science, technology, engineering. We do administer the biology, I'm guessing, ninth grade in Tewksbury. But DESI will report it out as a 10th-grade science test.
Pardon. I caught myself when I said it out loud. Okay, all right. So next is citizens forum. I'm not seeing anybody here to speak unless Mrs. Garrish is interested. And that brings us to Mr. Moncada for approval of minutes.
We have two tonight. So a motion to approve the special school committee meeting minutes from September 25th, 2024.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Moncada to accept the September 25th minutes, a second by Mr. Russo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously.
And we also have a motion to approve the minutes from our regular school committee meeting from October 16th, 2024.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Moncada, second by Mr. Russo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that vote passes unanimously. So in our submission and payment of bills?
Yeah, and we have two as well. So move the school department payroll be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,718,332.33. This is for pay period ending 10/24/24.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Moncada, second by Mr. Russo to approve and certify payroll period ending October 24th, 2024, in a total amount of $1,718,332.33. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, for unanimous vote.
And for payroll period ending 11/7/2024, I move the school department payroll be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,788,784.30.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Moncada, second by Mr. Russo to approve and certify payroll period ending November 7th, 2024, total amount of $1,788,784.30. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
For unanimous vote. And our superintendent and staff reports. Mrs. Terry Ovegan, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to start by recognizing that this past Monday, November 11th, was Veterans Day, a time where we honor and thank our veterans for their service. In that spirit, I attended the annual Veterans Day ceremony right here at the Tewksbury Memorial High School, where Mr. Brian Aylwood, our social studies teacher, as well as department head invites veterans from our own Tewksbury community through the local VFW and honors them with the entire TMHS administration, staff, and student body present. The Tewksbury Memorial High School concert band sang several heart-moving songs, some of the students gave speeches, and a local veteran gave a proud speech on what it meant for him to serve our country. So I want to sincerely thank Mr. Aylwood for annually setting up this ceremony, as well as Principal Andy Long, concert band, Mrs. Bea Joni Smith for representing the school committee, and most of all, the, I think it was close to a dozen veterans that came and attended the ceremony with us, made some new friends as I chatted with them during the breakfast portion. But I also want to note that additionally, students of the Dewing Heathbrook Center Elementary School and Ryan Schools created approximately 1,700 thank you cards to be delivered to our forgotten veterans of the Edith North Rogers Memorial Veterans Hospital. So I'm so proud of the special attention our students and this entire Tewksbury Public School community gives to honor our veterans each year. In your consent agenda, you'll see implement weather notices from the district as well as from our preschool programming. While the weather has been very mild, we're soon shifting to winter and potential, you know, weather disruptions in the district. So encourage everyone to take the time to read these notices. We'll overshare them and communicate them through the district newsletter as well as up on the website. As the temperatures drop, we're reminded that New England winter weather is just around the corner. Also, in your consent agenda, you're going to see some information regarding our eighth grade student information that's shared. There's an annual letter we send home to the eighth grade students and families of the WIN. This letter, along with the Tewksbury Memorial High School profile, will also go into next week's newsletter. I do want to draw your attention to our growing early college opportunities. You'll see in not only the letter, but the profile. In fact, quite coincidentally, these are the reasons from the dual enrollment programming, 13 dual enrollment classes, 16 AP classes, 23 honors classes, the engineering pathway, these are those programs that have garnered us more points in that, what's the terminology?
Accountability.
Accountability, though, in students taking high-level coursework here at the high school. Not only that, making those coursework options available to all students. So this is how we get more points in that accountability, and I'm proud to share with you how many opportunities there are for our students. If you look at the high school profile, you're going to see the post-secondary plans of the class of 2024, our last year class, our AP test performance, global certification opportunities, our recent college acceptances from our students, all great information that's being shared with our eighth grade parents. In addition, I challenge our, well, let me just say, I asked our principal, Andy Long, to infuse our students' voice into the communications we sent home to the WIN students about their own pride and satisfaction with our Tewksbury Memorial High School experience. He was so proud to share the first of our student-created videos with our WIN students and families through the eighth grade communications. The students did a great job, we hope to see more from them soon. Principal Ware will also share this video and all this information in his outgoing communications and newsletter. We will also post that link in our district newsletter this Friday. Kids could did a great job with why they're proud to be students here at the high school and what their favorite experiences are. As I said, it's the first of what we hope are many videos hearing directly. We know, by the way, this profile, this letter, all great literature to read, but our students aren't reading it. You know, our parents hopefully are. Our students want to hear from their peers in ninth through 12th grade. So that's a push on student voice we have here, and so far, our students are doing a great job. With that, let me just give you an update on the PSATs. On October 29th, we administered the PSATs here at the high school during the school day. Rather than targeting every student this year, we targeted students who chose to take the PSAT test, and they signed up and paid the $18 fee themselves. You should know that reinstituting the small fee did not deter our students. In fact, we had increased participation this year in our junior class. Eighty-eight juniors, 46% of the class, of the junior class, took the PSAT, an increase from students last year. Ms. Baker O'Brien said an increase of 60 students. I meant, I think she meant to say an increase of six students, but I'll verify that. And 48 sophomores took the PSAT, four more students than last year. In your consent agenda, you also have an updated Tewksbury Public Schools substitute teacher and aide rate sheet. Madam Chair, as a result of our collective bargaining agreements where teachers and aides may utilize a half-sick day, and we will need half-sick day substitutes, we have adjusted the sub-pay rate to reflect the half-day rates for not only half-day substitute rates, but early-release day rates. You'll see we've incentivized it a little bit, get people, I guess, out of bed to come to our school for half a day by making the rate slightly above just half of the full-day sub-rate. The rate change does require an affirmative vote of the school committee. Your hopeful approval of the consent agenda can satisfy that vote. The SAO report, so SAO stands for the Survey of Academic and Youth Outcomes, otherwise known as the SAO report. known as the SAO report, which is a DESI report that gives us progress on our students that have attended some of our enrichment programs. I want to draw your attention to the front page here, the DESI, about this report page, because one thing that sort of threw me for a loop was this idea of invalid length or missing SACs. How could we have 49 students with missing, right, identification criteria here? And Dr. Bastieri filled me in as to what that means. So first of all, this SAO report is a progress report and a look back on our 2024 Penguin Pride and 21st Century program. The Penguin Pride program was funded through the ASO State Grant, and the 21st Century program funded through the 21st Century Federal Grant. Those resources were combined to offer a six-week program for special populations of kindergarten and first graders. The federal grant required us to obtain and submit to DESI data that was collected on each student that attended the Dewing School 21st Century Grant. So the missing students, quite technically, are the 49 students from the Heathbrook. We weren't required to garner all of that data, their agenda, and the targeted population data. So while they're considered missing, we did report their progress. So, but DESI writes the report on the students with, say, SACs from the Dewing. So let me just give you an overview. We had 102 students enrolled in the summer program, 49 from the Heathbrook, and 53 from the Dewing. The data for the survey is collected from all the educators that work with students attending these programs. So what you'll see is very positive. These programs are so valid. You can see a positive growth in every single student area, the targeted areas across the board, in those criteria areas of relationship building with peers, communication, critical thinking, and engagement. And it's not, you know, a coincidence that that aligns very well also with our vision of a learner attribute, growth that we're hoping for in students. We've picked those growth areas intentionally to see if these enrichment programs are helping to build the attributes we want to see in every student. So what I want to share with you is how, I know I was, had to share with you some disappointing news, that we did not receive the 21st Century Grant again, and I told you that, don't worry, Dr. Bastieri is working together with our Heathbrook and Dewing principals to piece together this type of enrichment program because it works so well for our students. And when we know we might see some learning slippage, right, this is one way to not only grow our student learners towards their achievement during the summer, but also target certain populations. So we need to maintain these programs, quite simply. Dr. Bastieri has engaged in a new grant opportunity, Playful Learning, Social Emotional Learning, Quality Service Learning Program through the Student Voice Grant. So I'm going to be, try to be as succinct as possible. Our WIN school teachers are implementing some of this Service Learning Grant through their curriculum during the school day in the areas of health PE and social studies in ELA. We did not need all of those grant dollars to fully fund their PD and implementation of the program for Service Learning, High Quality Service Learning. So Dr. Bastieri went to DESI and asked that we may move some of that funding to continue to be able to provide the 21st Century type of enrichment program, as well as Penguin Pride. So I can tell you through her efforts, through the $50,000 grant, she's able to now use $20,000 to $30,000 to fund two enrichment programs, one at the Dewing and one at the Heathbrook. They'll run for eight weeks, beginning with the Dewing from January to March, then subsequent eight weeks at the Heathbrook from March to May. We'll be able to service 30 students. We'll still first invite students of those targeted areas, whether they're special ed students, English language learners, or economically disadvantaged, obviously opening up seats to other students once those invites go out first. So it's a real wonderful two-hour enrichment program, three days a week, that we're able to continue to provide to maintain those academic growth areas of students. So I can continue to give you more information as we have it, but we're just thankful to Dr. Bastieri, Principal Garrish who's here, Principal Bosworth, as well as the WIN teachers. I think some of you attended the Service Learning Project that you saw happen out of the summer enrichment programs, and it is wonderful that we can still piece this together. While it is not the same level of funding we had, it will continue to offer these opportunities to our most needy students. So that is why I put that in your consent agenda. No vote or approval is needed, but I thought you deserved those updates. I know, Ron, you talked a little bit about the DECA Fashion Show, another wonderful way in which our students are serving our community. I would call this a bit of Service Learning as well. But the Tewksbury Memorial High School DECA Club will be hosting its annual fashion show next week on Tuesday, November 19th. I say this again, it's at 6:00 here at the high school. The event is student-organized by our marketing and business-minded students under the direction of their club advisor, Mr. James Sullivan. Most importantly, the event is highly entertaining, but raises funds for cancer research in memory of Megan McCarthy, an amazing young woman who taught us all to believe in miracles, unfortunately, who lost her battle early on in cancer in her senior year here at the high school. Again, I encourage our community members to join us in this event, and certainly thank everyone who's working so hard. I think he said we have something like 75 students organizing and attending the event. And all proceeds, I think last year they hit an amazing milestone, helping to tip funds raised over $1 million. So we're, right, am I right, Mr. Russo? I think you were paying attention probably to those numbers a little bit more than I as a former DECA phenom. But a wonderful cause and a great night. So I'd like to also thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the school committee for allowing us all to attend the MAS, MAC Joint Annual Conference last week down in Hyannis. Do have to say that this year's event had so many interesting sessions to attend and was very well organized, and maybe it's partially because of our own chair, Ms. Garabedian, being one of the MAS leaders for District One. But highlights for me were the keynote speakers, learning about the Dignity Index for creating an environment where differing opinions and beliefs can build us up as a district rather than tear us down, updates on school law, recent legal cases in schools, developing an AI framework and policy. That's something really on our backburner, but something we'd like to move up front, using data resources to inform our school budgeting and special education finance issues. The topics were very relevant, and moreover, the opportunity to spend some time with you, members of the committee, and network with other district leaders all over the state is so beneficial in the work we strive to do here in Tewksbury. Again, thank you for all going, and really, I thought it was a wonderful, wonderful event this year. Thank you for your organization as well and putting it together. That concludes my lengthy updates.
Thank you. And Mrs. Milligan?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I just have one question. Thank you for sharing. Just on the inclement weather, early release.
Yes.
That is different than early dismissal for inclement weather, correct?
Which we try to almost never do. It does really require quite a bit of front-end communication that that could happen. It's hard for parents.
Right.
There were two things that happened in early, I mean, I'm sorry, late start, you know, a delay.
Yep.
A little bit easier to manage, and certainly helps us clean up our school lots and sidewalks and roads. And then there's the very brief. Sometimes we get the buses started 10, 15 minutes earlier at the high school so that they're finally on time by the time they get to our youngest students, so that they're not running very, very late. Very infrequently will we call, and most districts don't as well, an early release based on weather.
Right.
When you think about it, it's hard for parents to get home from work quicker, right? It's usually going to take longer. And then we have students potentially out in bad weather at home, you know, too early. So the information's there, but almost never is that called.
Right. But the inclement weather release, that's not something that someone's listening to a news channel to say, hey, Tewksbury is being early dismissed, two hours. The inclement weather release is just something like the 10 minutes.
Yes.
But parents are still being notified in that in some manner.
Yes.
Of that, so that parents can be at bus stops, et cetera, whatever's needed.
Right.
Okay.
And again, it generally is the oldest students who start out a little early, but by the time we get to the Ryan Center or the Heathbrook Dewing, we're back on time.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Moncada?
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you for the report. I also say thank you to the teachers, the students, the families that did the thank you cards for the veterans. It's much appreciated, and we look forward to doing that again, obviously, in the next fall, but also in the spring when we do Valentines.
Yeah.
So be prepared, be prepared for that. The thing with the inclement weather notice, could we, the one call now?
Yes.
Could we, could we add, I know this letter's already gone out, but maybe in the future, add how to join that, to get that, what's the word I'm looking for? The notifications via the one call?
Yeah.
Added to the letter, like, how to sign up for that? Because I don't think everyone necessarily knows how to do that. Am I talking about the right thing?
You know, I'll let us put it in the district newsletter this Friday as well, because most people take that, the one call right to text, to which is, people prefer.
Right.
You know, to get it via text.
Yeah, just, people didn't know how to sign up for it.
Yes.
Maybe helpful to add it to the letter. That was my last thing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just a thank you to Dr. Bastieri for figuring out a way to find that funding to support the continuance of that program, even though it might look a little bit different. I think that that's really helpful for our kids, so I appreciate her and the diligence she had there. And that was it.
Mrs. Beja Smith?
No, no questions. Thank you.
And just to piggyback off Mrs. Anderson, honestly, a huge thank you to anybody who's working on grant work right now. I think we've seen so much change in our funding, and we've seen influx in cost in other areas. Any money that we can find, grant monies to support some of this extra stuff is just, it's huge. So yeah, thank you to anybody who's doing that work.
Thank you.
Mrs. Milligan, floor chairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I'm just going to elaborate a little bit more on the M-CAS update for question two. On Tuesday, November 5th, the people of the Commonwealth voted to use, voted to end using M-CAS as the competency determination for high school graduation requirements. This will go into effect on or around December 5th. In the meantime, districts will need to create a plan for, around local measures. DESI will be providing more guidance to districts. It should be noted that M-CAS is still required as part of the federal and state law under the Every Student Succeeds Act. While not part of the high school competency determination anymore, this is still one measure that allows districts to triangulate data to help us better understand student performance in relation to our local measures. DESI has provided a question-and-answer guide that's on their M-CAS page if anyone is interested. But it is important to note that M-CAS is still important for many scholarships and academic programs, including the CIO by Literacy here in Tewksbury. In your packet under new business, you'll also find that the parent correspondence for our testing dates for this year, which will run from March 31st to early June to administer all the content areas and tested grade levels. I as well would like to say my thank you for the committee for allowing me to attend the MAS, MAC conference last week. It is always a wonderful PD experience to attend sessions that address issues in education. I was fortunate to attend a session on AI in districts, the legal updates, and learning more about the E2C hub that provides public data for educators, families, policymakers, and researchers. If anyone's interested, you can find that on the E2C website that's put out from DESI. We have an update from our standard-based report card committee. The teachers in K-4 schools have met over the course of the fall to review the information provided by teachers and families regarding our current standard-based report card. As the standard-based report card is a reporting mechanism for families to demonstrate progress towards grade level proficiency, each grade level looked at the information that was shared to help make the standard-based report card more concise around the salient grade level standards that students should hold control of by the end of the grade level, in which parents should know. While there are many more standards actually taught and assessed, the teams look to provide the information that is most beneficial for parents to understand what is happening with their student in relation to grade level standards. The report cards for trimester one will reflect these changes for this year. We hope it will make this more manageable for parents to see how their children are doing in these snapshots of time. In your consent agenda, there, I have an update on the professional development from November 5th. The district held a full professional development day for the staff. The day provided teaching staff time to enhance their teaching practices around collaborative conversations and create actionable plans or products to increase student learning. The day offered flexibility for teams and/or the departments to determine how they'd like to use this time as it relates to teaching and learning and how it connects to our strategic plan. Along with the self-directed, along with the self-directed time, there were over 20 targeted PD sessions for specific groups. Buildings met in pods at TMHS, allowing for both building and district teams to meet. These self-led sessions allow teachers the autonomy to work on the areas in which they felt would better their teaching practices, such as diving into local and state data, collaborating on common assessments to ensure consistent student experiences, or working on teams with other areas related to teaching and learning. Overall, 88% of the respondents felt that the day was purposeful and productive. The building principals were provided with feedback to review the successes and also how to make these days even more productive in the future. A few of the quotes that were included is, having the time to work on materials that directly affect my classroom was a huge benefit, very helpful and much needed. I will refer back to the work that we did today often, and I learned a lot from talking with my colleagues. Along with the professional development for our teaching staff, our school nutrition staff also engaged in professional development with Captain Kenneth Sandberg of the Tewksbury Fire Department, providing AED and CPR training to our staff. Thank you, Captain Sandberg. And that is all I have for my report tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No.
Thank you.
Fire Department, that's fantastic.
And I have to, big shout out to the school nutrition staff for, we had pizza and salad for all the staff members on the PD day, which is always a bonus.
Oh, that's great.
Yes.
Feed them if you need them, right?
Right. If you need them, feed them.
Mr. Libby is not here with us tonight, so is there anything you wanted to share from his staff update, or just the item that we have later on?
I'll wait till, yes, his summary.
Okay. Any questions or comments, or any additional comments you have on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I didn't know if you were going to bring it up, but I did want to note that you have a flyer in there that went out to the public for this Thursday evening, where the school committee welcomes members of our community to visit them during your scheduled listening session. It's an informal opportunity for community members to just discuss topics of interest to them in education in here in Tewksbury.
This will be our first one. We thought, it's actually a coincidence, I'd like to take credit that we planned it this way, but we didn't, to a meeting at the high school, and it happens to be during parent-teacher conference night. So if anybody's coming to the high school for parent-teacher conference night, please just stop in and say hi, so we're not hanging out alone. The first session, Ms. Bea Joni Smith and I will attend. We have one in December, I think on the 12th. Mr. Moncada has volunteered, and we're waiting for a second member to be willing to go. And hopefully, we'll try to do it once a month and see how this works out, if we can. And then there's, I think that's it in the consent agenda, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in our packet this season.
I'll second. Okay, so a motion by Mr. Russo, and a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. Now, we're going to take this as a roll call, given that we had a financial vote in there for the, the subpay. So Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And that's for unanimous vote. School committee member reports, starting with the CPAC, Mrs. Bea Joni Smith and Mrs. Anderson.
We had our, they had their last meeting. I believe their next meeting is on the agenda for November 21st, 2024. A lot of the last meeting was talking about the Halloween event and how they were going to participate in that. It seems like they had some good participation. I forget where they were at, right behind the, I think in the fire station, but they seemed to have a good plan, and it sounds like they had some folks visiting them, so I think that was good. The one question that they did have, and I believe I brought it up last month, was just around the special education audit and when we would see an outbrief from that.
Well, coincidentally, we're meeting with the auditors, the consultants that we contracted, to review their draft of their findings, and I would expect within a couple of weeks of that, we'll And I would expect within a couple of weeks of that, we'll have a final report.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, all of that is accurate. The only thing with the meeting next Thursday, it's Zoom, just because of the high school play taking place that same night. I think it happens to them every year that their third Thursday, whatever the meeting is, ends up overlapping with that play. So they're meeting via Zoom on the 21st. One additional thing that's happened since then, I will be participating in the Apple Institute, which stands for, and I'm reading it so that I don't mess it up, Advancing Parent and Professional Leadership in Education. Each team in the cohort are assessing and addressing communities' unique needs regarding the new IEP. I'm joining members of the CPAC as well as some of the members of our Special Ed Administration. There is a meeting that will take place also on Thursday, November 21st, to kick off this cohort with several meetings after that, to kind of develop this team of people that will be working on this. So I'm looking forward to that as well. I'm working with the CPAC and Special Ed Admin on that.
That's exciting. I'd love to hear feedback on that.
Absolutely.
Congratulations on working on that. And then my understanding is they had a listening session today?
They did. They had their first coffee chat, similar to what we're doing as the committee. They had a coffee chat today at Starbucks. There were about 12 people that were there. I popped in this afternoon. It was a nice opportunity to talk informally. They're posting those on their Facebook page and sending out a flyer for their email group for anyone who's interested.
Any more questions, comments on CPAC? Next, the wellness advisory, Mrs. Anderson and Mr. Monka.
We haven't met since the, was it last month, October? Our next meeting's in December, so we may have an update that day, next meeting.
Okay. And policy subcommittee, Mr. Russo, did you want to?
Yeah, we just need to continue to follow through on our meetings so that we can focus on our, I think we're gonna focus on the J section, which is student-facing policies. There was a couple of things that came out too that we learned too from MASSE last week around cell phone policies and other policies that other districts have. So again, we're gonna, we're trying to just collate information right now and hopefully we'll have some to bring forth to the committee over the next couple of months.
Okay. And then also, Mrs. Bea Joni Smith had shared a MCAS policy on, it was a CPAC-specific policy.
Yeah, CPAC and LPAC, new policy by the MASSE. They were supposed to have been publishing it and releasing it at the conclusion of the conference. I think with elections and then the conference and everything happening, they were just finalizing that document. So it should be on there.
So we can add that to our mix.
Yep, perfect.
All right. And seeing that we don't have any updates for policy tonight, moving on to all business, we have some enrollment numbers to look at.
We do, Madam Chair. The enrollment that I have shared with you in the packet is informational only. I do want to draw your attention to the official October 1st enrollment numbers that were shared with the department. And you'll see some slight changes when we roll that page over to November 1st. We have technically an increase of 11 students. There's always ebbs and flows, especially after October 1st, of 11 additional students in the district. You can, you know, look at this in particularly preschool. We see growth in that area all throughout the school year, but it was nice to see some ninth grade students also grow at our high school, an additional six students. So what I wanted to share with you too, and if you look at the adjusted class size counts, it came to my attention, when I was looking at this, I have it hanging in my office, that we did not have listed for you all the special educators also in the district. So while those have no students, the teachers at the bottom of all of those columns don't have students assigned to them because those students are assigned to the homeroom, to the general ed classroom. I thought it was important that you saw the special education staff listed in the grade levels as well. So this is a fluid, you know, document that I'll continue to share with you throughout the committee meetings.
Thank you. Questions or comments on enrollment? Okay. Thank you so much. And, all right. Now, moving on, we have some school committee meeting dates that we need to look at. We did not actually choose a date for March or June when we had looked at our schedule. So in looking back at that, we had to kind of circle back and look at that. And then in looking at the whole schedule, realized that the budget workshop was set for January 29th. And the public hearing on the budget was then gonna be February 5th, and that was just one week apart. So it was too close. In checking with Mr. Libby, he felt as though January 22nd would work for him for the budget workshop, as long as that worked for the committee. March 11th unfortunately does overlap with a board of selectmen meeting. We do try not to do that with any other meeting in town, but it's difficult. Then also the same with the June 10th meeting would also overlap with a school board of selectmen meeting. June 10th, in looking at June, if we'd gone one week further out, that would have put us potentially, when school is out, at that point, a lot of people go away. So we would have a hard time, maybe with ourselves, being able to attend, but then also sometimes when we bring in a lot of our end-of-year recognitions that we like to do, that would make it kind of tricky. So June 10th would keep us inside the year end. If we'd gone a week before that, that backs us up into graduation.
Senior weekend.
And senior kind of activities. So we were kind of in a tricky spot. So this is why we have, two of our meetings now would be on Tuesdays, one in March, one in June. So I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at your family life schedule and see how this works.
I could think of no other way that I'd wanna spend my birthday than end of budget. We'll have a cake for you. Not a big one. It's fine.
I will make a motion to approve these dates as presented to us this evening, as January 22nd, Tuesday, March 11th, Tuesday, June 10th, for our regular meeting slash budget workshop meetings.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Just a point of order, it does say that we need a roll call vote on this one. Is that accurate or?
I'm not sure that's accurate, but I think it's just money.
Yeah.
Mrs. Johnson? This is roll call vote?
For agenda?
I wasn't sure.
I think, I think we're, I think we're. Okay. And moving on now to the quarterly budget report. As I said, Mr. Libby's not able to be here with us tonight, so in his absence, I'm super excited he's gonna share.
Yeah, and Mr. Libby obviously sends his apologies and I will do my best, so I give you my apologies too, to summarize what Dave has shared with you. He's quite thorough and always gives you the quarterly report and all the information that you need. I'm not gonna go through all of his report. Let me just start by saying though, what you have is the fiscal year 2025 budget documents as well as a budget transfer adjustment request that will require your approval in just a minute. As a reminder, the supplemental budget request was made to the town at special town meeting on October 1st, 2024 of $386,895. The needs and available resources of the district have slightly changed and we would like to adjust our budget to reflect those changes. The enclosed transfers attempting to reallocate funds in the salary area of the budget. Salaries have been impacted by collective bargaining agreements being negotiated and finalized over the past several months. The bottom line in the school budget, however, has not changed. And this budget transfer is technically a zero-sum balance, but will, as I said, require a roll call vote to move the budget, to transfer monies within the budget. Before we do that, I did want to draw your attention, as Mr. Libby put a great summary page together as well, on the third page. And this summary really shows the status of our budget, our allocated funds, our already expended funds, our encumbered funds. Two costs in our lines that we're paying close attention to and have our concern, if you will, is line 89, transportation, and line 95, special education. These unintended and trending cost increases will be watched carefully as they obviously, when we look at all of the available funds, we'll need to continue to look at available balances and see how those transfers might need to occur or how other costs in our line items may need to be depleted to allow for those increases. So Dave will be carefully combing through all of the POs already encumbered. He wanted me to share with you, our folks are really great at encumbering all of the money early on and sometimes as things change, things don't get unencumbered. So he will carefully look at every single PO encumbered at this point and see if he can really finesse these expected expenses and have more information and an update to you in December. So that's my best summarization of the documents that Dave has shared with you. And just as a reminder, in order to make the transfer request, he's provided you on the second page. It'll require a roll call vote of the committee.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick question, and I'm sure we'll have to get with him on it, but that capital outlay, I'm assuming we have some big capital expenditure that we just haven't?
We do. And as we share with you in August, that long list of the many needs in the district, that's the fund that, you know, is used for that. But, yeah, that unfortunately is one that can take a hit when we have unexpected required costs, like I said, some, you know, expenses that we're seeing in special education and transportation.
Yep. Yes, Mr. Russo?
I promise I'll go easy on you.
Thank you.
The out-of-district transportation, that, if it's over a certain dollar amount, that is, refresh your memory, that is picked up by the circuit breaker.
Some of it is.
But in the subsequent year.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So that, so some of those dollars that were over right now, we could make up for next year, basically.
Yes, potentially. You know, we got quite a wonderful session on that actually at the conference, but I cannot wait to dig deep into all those slides with both Mr. Libby and our special ed administrators because any dollar we can recoup. And then if there are extraordinary, you know, expenses, you can recoup in this school year and next. So, you know, something we have to pay close attention to, we're seeing the out-of-district van services, not the one we necessarily contract with, with Boberg and Chelmsford, but those individual rides are just so exorbitant. You know, 12 to $2,000 a day for a ride. When you, when you do that math, we can't sustain that. So we are looking at other, Dave is actively talking with other transportation services, including ambulance services, to see if we can take that cost down. We just can't sustain that level of spending.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments, Mrs. Anderson?
No.
No. I will say, yes, it was helpful at the conference to hear from other districts that are seeing exactly what we're seeing. Some worse, some not quite as bad. Some of these districts that are much more rural, that have farther distances to go, are seeing some really difficult times. But it's hard to see, you know, these percentages in November.
Yes.
So I am glad that Mr. Libby, Mr. Libby works with us in this way, where we kind of keep an eye on the budget this way and, you know, if there's anything that we can do from the committee end, as, you know, this carries on, because this is not sustainable.
No.
You know, these numbers are just not sustainable in terms of transportation. So I don't know, I know last year there was conversation about, and this isn't gonna work for, you know, this population, but maybe in other ways in cost-saving with transportation. But I know, looking at LRTA for, you know, any buses for purchase, I know in athletics, they're sharing a lot of buses, they're doing trips back and forth to the same town, where they used to maybe take two or three buses to the same town for the, you know, they're taking the JV team coming back, picking up the varsity team going back. So they, I can see where they're, they're trying to make some differences in all the different departments that are utilizing transportation. But anything we can do to support you in terms of either it's advocacy or helping you explore just ways to cut costs in other areas?
Well, explore programs in our district as well. And I know Ms. Garrish is happy to hear this, this concept continuously be discussed, and we should be, is, you know, how can we build upon, and it's hard to start a program, right, because there's a big cost that is associated with that. But if we do and if we can, how can we build program where students are staying right here that suits their needs? And that, that's, that's obviously, you know, a discussion we continue to have and I think have a very immediate need to look at.
Yeah. We can't, we can't afford to, to carry on this way. And I think, I mean, the right thing to do, we've always said anyway, is for students to be in district. So, you know, as the special ed audit comes in and you look at some of their recommendations and how we can try to even capture some of those students, I'm all behind it.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for filling in. In the meantime, we do have a vote before us, so, as Terry Wigan said, we have, there's a budget transfer that is within the salary allotment. It's a reallocation of funds. It's as presented in our packet. Bottom line figure is not changed. The bottom line figure is, remains at $56,717,605. There's a vote required for the changes that are presented in our packet tonight within the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Salary, sorry, salary, budget transfer.
Sorry, I need to cut you off there. I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfer as presented this evening.
I'll second. Okay. So a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Anderson. Mr. Monka, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and that was for unanimous vote, Mrs. Johnson. Okay. Great. And now for some new business, discussing the walking track.
Yeah. Well, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to ask for your vote tonight on the walking track, and I'll tell you why. This was a success last year, where we were able to open up the walking track here at the high school, certain evenings, if you will, late afternoon into evening, for the community. It does come at a cost. We do have to have a site director and we, which is why I thought this should come to a vote of the committee, certainly not funds that we had in the budget, but we think worthwhile and the community really appreciated the walking track. So you see the schedule there. Should that change, we certainly will post the schedule and we will communicate it out as best we can. But what we're looking for is your vote to approve opening our walking track back up to the community on these dates. We can estimate at this time, depending on the amount of hours and nights, approximately a $4,000 cost to doing this.
Okay. Any questions or comments about the walking track?
I'll make a motion to approve the TMHS walking track and associated fees with having a site.
Apologies. Sorry, I was, my brain was thinking of a question. I have a question before you vote on that. Is this a one-time expenditure or is this something that we are putting in going forward? Is it something that we can look at to work with our town, with this community? I can't even think, my brain isn't working right now. The, what is it, like, yeah, what's our new community?
The recreation.
Recreation. Thank you so much. With our recreation department to look at this, this line item?
I mean, I, I would give my preference. My preference would be that we're approving this for one year and then we reevaluate this next year, I think.
I think we have to, and I'll tell you why. I mean, there is a, there's always a desire to utilize our school buildings, right? They're, they're community buildings, but there's also the need to upkeep them, secure them, have someone avail, I mean, there's safety issues and all kinds of things. So I think it's a worthy discussion because we have to then think about, well, what is the cost? And if we needed to, I think I shared with you, Madam Chair, that, you know, the center elementary school is being utilized inside and out, day and night. And our youth groups have coaches and people there, but do we need a site director then? And when those buildings are open? I mean, we secure our building all day long and we want it to be a community space that people use. It's wonderful when they're, you know, it's like a bustling energy going on. wonderful when they're, you know, it's like a bustling energy going on. But at what point are we then creating a budget where they're recreational spaces as well? So I think it is a worthy discussion, maybe a nice discussion to have with our new town manager. I meet him tomorrow formally. But just to put on the radar, are we going to create funding available annually for this type of use of the school? And we certainly want people to use it. Or are those fees that go on then to the groups that use them, and do we, how do we maintain consistency with that? So I do think it's a timely and needed discussion, because this is something I'd like to see happen every year, but then we have to decide how we're building those things into the budget.
I agree. And I think, I think it should be looked at year to year in terms of the usage. And, I mean, is this enough time? I mean, are people really, you know, are they looking for more days a week for it to be utilized?
Well, I will tell you, this calendar is made in conjunction with the use of the gym. I mean, our gym is used for athletics as well, all winter long. So when people want to use the inside space the most, that is when the gym is fully booked. So there's that juxtaposition of, you know, the event happening, and then, you know, a public use, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
And also, when you look at it, if we have a person, a site director, someone here, if they are unable to be here, does the space stop? Like, so that night, there isn't a person, is there?
Yes.
Yeah. There's just, more than just.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
So there's a motion on the floor.
Yep, there's a motion on the floor.
A second.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the site director for you to open the walking track as it's, the schedule's presented. And can we add to that for the proposal for the one year?
Sure, yes.
And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Great.
Thank you.
Yes, great. So I think people will be excited to know, the first day that'll be opened is, is that December 2nd?
Right, right after the Thanksgiving break.
And then, if I could just ask, will this be scheduled disseminated to the town in other ways, rather than not just through school resources?
Yeah, it'll certainly be posted on our website, go out to all of our community through our avenues, but we'll share it with the town hall, so that they can share it through their communication efforts as well.
Great, thank you. And now, walking track, our next generation MCAS dates, I hope you, Mrs. Milligan?
Mm-hmm. In your packet, you will have the correspondence that we hope will be going out to the community. That includes the testing windows at all of our buildings. As previously reported, March 31st is the start of our testing window, and it does go all the way through early June with our science tests at the high school.
Okay, questions or comments on the schedule? Testing process, or? All right, thank you very much. All right. All right, and from here, our new school committee matters of interest. Anything anybody would like to add?
I would say, at our MAS, I mean, MCAS and MAS, or two acronyms, they're too close together, by the way. So our, I enjoyed our time there and learning. I think a takeaway I had was that I'm, I think it's, I was reassured that, I think we're doing great as a district, as a committee, based upon some things that you hear, and just are learning there, you know, we're doing the right things here. I think that's a takeaway I, you know, have. So, anyway, I enjoyed it, and look forward to doing it again next year, so.
Great. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. I would, same, I would like to thank the town for allowing all of us to go. I think it's, I mean, this is the second year that I went, I wasn't able to participate as much as I would have liked to, but I think it's just a testament to the town, that they provide the budget for all of us to be able to go and spend time together. I didn't see a lot of towns have their full committee there, so I think that's a positive thing. Also, just a shout out to the folks who put on the Best Buddy Senior Night for the basketball. There was a ton of support from the community there for those kids, and we, I think that gave them a really good senior, senior night for them to walk out on. So it was very cool, and I'm looking forward to going to see Footloose in a week, two weeks?
Next week.
Yeah, so excited for that. That's it.
And Russo?
Yeah, I feel like we have so many things going on in the district. I mean, it feels, it almost feels like the end of the school year, nevermind.
It's busy, yes.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of things going on between drama, some things athletically, MAS. I agree, Mr. Moncada, you know, when you're, when you're not sure if you're doing something right, and you're going in the right direction, just look around at your peers in other schools, at the towns, other districts, and then you're like, okay, yep, we're definitely going in the right direction, in some cases. So, anyway, again, big shout out to the residents of the community for supporting that initiative, and a lot of good takeaways, a lot of networking, a lot of, you know, different ways to look at things, you know, for not only our district, but really for things for the state as well. So it was definitely a helpful few days, and, you know, now trying to put some of it to good use, so.
I, the only thing, a couple things to add. There is a great opportunity, there's a Hall of Fame induction at the end of the month, on 11/29.
Thank you.
So for some of our former athletes of TMHS, that should be a great time. Some old timers there, and some not so old timers. So I think that's something a lot of people are looking forward to. And then, just, I don't want to steal any of your thunder, but you did go first. The school facility, Tewksbury School Facility Study Committee, where we'll be touring our next meeting, touring some of the schools. So that'll get some of those people that are residents, that haven't been in our schools ever, or in a long time, into the buildings. And I'm excited for that. So I think that'll help give some perspective to some people that really just need to be in here and see what the schools look like, and get a feel for the size of the buildings and the rooms and things like that. So I'm looking forward to that. Mrs. Bea Johnnie Smith?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I don't want to reiterate the same sentiment on the MAS C conference. Always rewarding. I think I have a full notebook of information. I look forward to the slides coming out as well, because there's some stuff that you just don't, can't absorb at all, and, you know, it's a lot. Couple other things, I wanted to throw, put a shout out to the Center Elementary School on the L Potluck. Katie and I attended that, it was so great. It had slide shows going. Ms. Milligan was there as well, I saw. It was awesome. It's such a great event. It's, it just brings a different group of people together who don't typically have a network to rely on, and it's just really wonderful to see what those teachers are doing to bring that community together, and the development of the LPAC within that, and really working to help those families feel supported and engaged and included. So that was really awesome. I think I went home with a bunch of recipes. Lady said, oh, you already came up on another one? It's like, yeah, of course. So it's a great event. It's wonderful, it's wonderful. I know the WIN school does a similar cultural night, and you get to experience it from the student side, because I think the students run that one. It's awesome. So I just would recommend anybody who's watching to go out and enjoy that event as well in the future. Folloween, I think we met prior to Folloween, so a number of our PACs participated in that, had trunks and tables set up, including our CPAC. It was amazing. Several of our students from the drama program in the WIN and the high school helped the police department do their haunted house. Katie walked through. I did not walk through, I was scared.
Just a few screams.
But that was awesome. I loved to see our kids helping and volunteering in different ways. So that was excellent. And then, to those who attended our townwide PAC meeting, that, Ms. Haregan, that you supported that event, it was nice to see some of our PACs come together to talk about some of the things that are important to them, changes to policies that are out there. It's just another opportunity for them to collaborate and work together and kind of build up their, what else, their bench strength. Everybody kind of rolls over to the next grade, you know, you did an elementary school PAC, now you move on to the junior high, the middle schools and junior highs and the high school. And it's nice for those parents to be able to have an opportunity to talk to each other and network as well, because you might not have a parent from high school who knows parent in the WIN, and that kind of gives them that opportunity to roll over some knowledge. So those are all the things I think I attended this past month. So, that's all.
It's a month, it's been a month.
Yeah.
Future school committee meeting dates, regular business meeting on December 11th and January 8th. We have, and we've also discussed some of these other upcoming ones already. Future subcommittee and advisory committee dates, we talked about the CPAC business meeting on November 21st and January 16th, wellness advisory on December 11th and February 12th, and policy subcommittee will need to be setting a date again. And with that, any future agenda items?
Madam Chair, just want to, I'm not sure that it would work for next month, I don't think Mr. Drewan's available, but we've talked in the past about captain's counsel, and I just think, just given that there's been such a push to at the middle school level about youth sports, leadership, et cetera, how that bridges to the high school, I think it might be good for that piece to just come in and maybe just present a little bit, and just share with the committee sort of what some of their goals are, and how they're kind of taking it from goals to application within the buildings.
And you're correct, I know he's not available next meeting, however, let me talk with him about something, maybe in January.
Yeah.
I know, I think we'll be seeing Matt Feld here, though, in December, with the boys.
Yeah.
Baseball team, but, okay.
That actually, I know it's definitely on the radar for Mrs. Johnson, because we have talked about it, but that might not be a bad time in January, only because you'll have your captains established, so you maybe could pull in fall and winter together.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, try to capitalize as much as you can.
That's been talked about.
Yeah. And there's a lot of great success, as Ronnie had talked about, the fall, fall groups, so I'm sure we'll be seeing some of those.
Yep.
Anything else or future event agenda? Okay, great, and that's it for me.
Our motion to adjourn.
A second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's 8:32.